This conference will now be recorded.
Whenever you're ready, Diana.
Okay.
Our clock is.
Our clock is off. I know, I noticed that too.
Oh, it is off. Yeah, they were putting in new cameras.
It's 5:33.
All right, so we'll go ahead and this meeting is now called to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Let's see, Commissioner John?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Share the place?
Here.
And Commissioner Clark is out today.
She is out now. Do we find out about the voting on excuses or absent?
Yeah, I will give that.
Okay. Okay. So does anybody, I'll just say, we'll just do it informally today, anybody have any opposition to excusing Commissioner Clark?
Oh, absolutely not, absolutely not. She's, she's, she's safe.
Commissioner Smith? All right.
We better not.
Yeah, that's true. Thank you. All right. So today's Tuesday, March 11th, 5:30 PM. Do we have any?
Do we have you talking to the?
Oh, sorry. Okay, can you hear me better now? Okay, so. Let's start with the approval of the meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the February 11th meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Oh, I wasn't there.
So do you want to abstain? Okay. Any names? And I. I'm an A, so, an I. So we have approval of the meeting minutes for February 11th. Motion carries and public comment. Do we have public comments?
We do not have anybody joining online.
Okay, and we have nobody here in the City Hall, so we'll move ahead and close public comment. Commissioners, do we have any unfinished business we wanted to discuss? No? Commissioner Hill?
None.
Okay. All right, new business. We have the comp plan presentation by Alec Igarola. Did I pronounce that correctly?
You did. Yeah, thank you. So Angie, do you have the presentation?
I do.
Pulled up? Okay. I just don't see on my end, so. I'll just try to work with that best I can. So just good evening, Planning Commissioner. Sorry, I'm not in person this week. I've did it virtually. I'm actually in Seattle this week. But I wanted to keep moving the comprehensive plan update along with you and wanted to kick off. Or keep moving forward with the Parks Recreation Open Space element, the second draft of that, and then the first draft of the transportation element. We're going to be kind of staggering three elements. Starting from last month through April. There we go. Now I can see it. Thank you, Angie. So if you go to the next slide, Angie. So the purpose of tonight is taking a second look at the Parks Recreation Open Space element per the Planning Commission discussion in last month's meeting. And then we'll discuss those, that second draft of the Parks element and make a motion. And then we'll follow that with the first draft of the transportation element and code related updates. And then discuss next steps and end that with a discussion and some planning commission questions that we had directed for you all. So if we go to the next slide, looking directly at the Parks element. All these changes have resulted from Planning Commission feedback that we received at last month's meeting. So the first was this travel shed map that you see on the right that shows the parks acquisition areas. This map was shown at the very bottom of the chapter or the very last page. We relocated this to be in line with the text instead of the end of the chapter, just because it made sense with the conversation flow of. The text itself and we relocated that within that conversation in the text. And then the next bullet is we have a conditions assessment matrix of parks facilities in La Center. And this wasn't in any sort of ranking, but was asked to prioritize these just for ease of read and to just understand. Kind of the ranking of each park. So we prioritize these from best to worst and I'll show that on the next slide. And then we updated the footnotes from the bottom of the text to the bottom of figures and tables at the referencing per Planning Commission comment. So if I go to the next slide, please. This is that condition assessment matrix for current La Center parks. The first column on the left are the parks or special use areas listed. And then the next column is the acreage of those parks and then classification. And then the park site average. And you can see here, we go from a scale of 1.1 to 2.3 on the right hand column. Generally, one is good, good condition for a park and then two is fair and three is poor. So you see here that overall parks in the center are pretty good condition. And this assessment and this prioritization here kind of shows where we can prioritize some park improvements and funding for those improvements by parks in the center. So generally you'll say, maybe we don't need to prioritize Stern Wheeler Park or Riverside Park because they're in pretty good condition for improvements. But, but the River Access Park or John Pollock may, may need some improvements as those aren't as in great in condition. Still in good condition, but not as great as Riverside or Stern Wheeler.
Question, Alec?
Yes.
Where do those numbers come from? Are they provided by the city or by the county or how are those, how do you drive those numbers?
The condition assessment matrix, it's, it comes from the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan that was adopted last year. A consultant did an analysis to. Determine the conditions of parks and there's several matrix that go, or metrics that go into determining the.
Do the city employees do the. Do the acreage and the park site average, is that something the city did or?
Um, the acreage is something the city has and the park site average was an assessment made by the consultant. They came and visited the parks and.
By whom though?
Made the analysis.
Ah, by the consultant. All right, thank you.
And I can't name the consultant off the top of my head, but it wasn't, it wasn't WSP, but it was a separate consultant.
There's a paragraph right before the table that's in the, that describes that assessment.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions before I? Move ahead?
Anybody?
No, good, thank you.
Good, thank you. Yeah, if we go to the next slide. So the next couple of slides are about goals and policies that we've updated per Planning Commission input at the last meeting. The first is we added language to the first goal about maintaining and operating a park system that operates. And then we add specifically to protect and preserve native flora, fauna, fish and wetlands. And then the next policy is 6.2.13. The previous version that we had in front of Planning Commission last month had a policy that was looking at the feasibility of enforcing park requirements for residential developments. But now since that policy was drafted back in 2016, the city does have a code for that for residential development. So we revised that to continue to enforce that family parks provisions for residential developments. And then we revised goal 6.3 to list a variety of trail users. We kept it in the previous versions pretty high level, but we actually listed per Planning Commission direction, specific types of trail users like walkers, cyclists, equestrians and so forth. So you see that in the draft text. And then next slide, please. We've also added a policy to include. Trail signage to keep people out of ecologically sensitive areas. We did receive a Planning Commission comment today about how the language may be misconstrued for saying keeping people out of restrooms. When you read the rest of that policy language and I read it and when I read it the first time, I read it the same way. So we can go, come back to this in the discussion later, but I do agree and that should be rephrased. But again, we did include that policy per Planning Commission direction just to keep people out of those areas. And then last, we explored the feasibility of a big canoe launch event and to coordinate that with the Calis as a revised policy. I just held that as a conversation piece to the last meeting, just not sure if we wanted to keep that or not. But we revised to explore with the feasibility rather than providing the big canoe launch. And then next slide. At this point, I want to open up to discussion with Planning Commission for the second draft. And for any other input and then on the next slide, I have a draft motion for whenever the Planning Commission's ready to make that motion. But I want to open it up to conversation at this point. Thank you.
Alec, yeah, back to, can you go back a couple, Angie, to? That's fine, right there. Under 6.3.5. I had submitted to the city for review and. The fact that we didn't have sufficient signage on our trails. That, that indicated that motorized vehicles were not permitted. And so we had some areas where people were running their bikes and trailer, motorcycles. And other motorized vehicles, including a trailer up and down the trail. So that did get, that did get taken care of. And I noted, I checked that out, at least one of the areas has that sign now indicating that. Is that something that should maybe some words to that effect be put into this policy or added to it or included? Or is that really unnecessary? I'm open for any suggestions on that.
Thanks, Paul. Or Dennis. So. Let me, I'm trying to think here. I think we can include some language about. Trails being for non-motorized uses because that's not the intent of our trails in the center to allow any sort of motorized vehicles. So I think we can, I think we include a policy to that in effect, just to maintain that these trails are for non-motorized modes of transit. Whether that be trail, bike, horse, so forth.
Yeah, thank you.
It's somewhat addressed in the policy 6.3.4. Where you list the things they might specify. It says, provide development standards for trails to provide adequate recreational facilities that cannot accommodate pedestrians, bicycle, horse, AD8 and aging population users. I don't know if it's at that point, might be say, these trails are not intended for motorized vehicles.
Oh, you mean to include it in the 3.4?
Possibly.
Okay, yeah, I know.
I think that, I agree, that makes more sense there. That's a good place to slip that piece in and so that.
Well, that's.
Filters into the pieces. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I had a question on table four. Where we talked about.
Yeah, I don't think this table is in the presentation, but it was about the.
Level of services.
Level of service, yeah.
Yeah, so we were moving from the 2017 adopted standard and it was, they said it was a minor adjustment. To the 2024 and I was wondering what the minor adjustment was. Was it that it was, if we look at that table. So are we going from eight acres per thousand down to 5.5 acres for community and then, or like, I was, I was confused on what the minor adjustment was and what.
Yeah.
Look like.
It loosely. In the table, it doesn't outright say that, but in the paragraph it makes that connection. I think it could be a little more direct of a connection. And what you're getting at is correct. It's from, it's from eight to 5.5 acres per thousand people. And that was what the minor adjustment is. Otherwise, the level of service standards should stay the same. So. I think we can make that connection more clear in the text itself.
Yeah.
Doesn't fully make that connection like you're saying.
Yeah, I was just going to say like maybe add just one more column that said 2017 was previous. Standards and then show it against the 2024 proposed standards.
Just show the, show the, show that minor adjustment. Okay.
Yeah. Because I think we also went down from 1.6 for neighborhood to 1.5 acres per neighborhood. And I had like a question about how that would impact, what does that look like? As far as, you know, do we have, does anybody on the commission have any issues with decreasing the. Level of parks that we would get. From new development.
I feel that it increases over time. It increases over time. So I don't know that we would get less. That's just my impression.
Well, less than we would have if we followed the 2017 standards.
And I'd also like to say that these standards have been adopted because this park, it's referencing the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan for 2024 that was adopted by City Council.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so what's, the 5.5 was adopted in 24?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so the table shouldn't read proposed then, should be what it is?
Yeah, it should be what it is, yeah.
Yeah, it said 20.
That's where the confusion led in here?
Yeah. So it's not a proposed standard, so.
Adopted standard, yeah. And I can make that more clear in the text too, that this was an adopted plan with these adopted standards.
Okay.
Now we'll get rid of the word proposed from the table?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, I think that was just. Brought in from the Parks Plan because it may have had that language. Because we have a draft Parks Plan that we're working out of, but it's been finalized since then. So I think that was just a scrivener's error.
Okay, so in that case, I don't think we need to add 2017 to the table. All right.
So we won't be adding 2017. To the table. Is that clear, Alec?
Because that's.
Yeah. Because we adopted new standards since 2017.
Yep.
So I wanted to know if I have a motion to move forward the draft Parks Recreation Open Space Element, Chapter 6 of the La Center Comprehensive Plan to City Council for consideration with these two revisions. For 6.3.4 include not, or five somewhere in there. Include that non-motorized vehicles are prohibited on trails as signage. And then table four to update it from 2024 proposed standard to 2024 standard.
I just still am in the comment phase if we can hold before the motion.
Okay.
I don't know if you had anything down there, but I just had one thing where the Parks. 6.1 goals update. If we could pull that up, please.
The maintenance and management goal, 6.1?
Yeah, that'd be slide five, one of the goals and policy slides, Angie.
The back ones, I think.
Maybe forward two or three.
Yeah.
Back one. There we go. The red one. Uh, protection of and preservation of enhanced native flora, fauna, fish and wetlands? I'm going to ask if the commission would agree to add the word maybe wildlife or to eliminate the word fish. And just include the word wildlife or if we were specifically targeting fish. But excluding other types of wildlife.
Like, like our ducks.
Well, it's sponsored by Ducks Unlimited. There's the birds, all the different things. So I didn't know if I missed something there and it was a specific thing we were doing. We're just water here and fish or.
That would, that would cover the fish if we do that.
Wildlife, right?
Um.
I think.
If you typically fish and wildlife are two separate, like department fish and wildlife, they always, they're just two separate things.
That would include alligators.
Some of the fish are released pets and they're not wild. They're just living out there.
Well, native fish.
Just other animals other than the fish, but I thought, you know.
But wouldn't fauna count as wildlife? We can say wildlife instead of fauna because.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Fauna is animals.
That is, that's, that's, that's like. Bushes and trees.
I thought it was ferns or something, yeah.
It is, that, that's where that falls.
Flora, flora is plants, fauna is animals.
Oh, well, never mind then. It just.
But we could say flora, wildlife, fish, just to make that clear.
Includes animals?
Well, then I, I apologize. It's just fine the way it is.
All right, thank you.
And this was a, this was a piece added by Planning Commission.
I interpreted that as vegetation.
I did too.
Apologies. That's all I had.
Okay. Commissioners, any other comments?
I don't.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. All right. Are you ready? Do I need to say all that all over again?
Yeah, you have to say it again.
Yeah, say well. All right. Do I have a motion to move forward the draft Parks Recreation and Open Space Element, Chapter 6 of the La Center Comprehensive Plan to City Council for consideration with two updates? 6.3.4 or 5 add information that signage for non-motorized vehicles being prohibited on the trails. And table four update 2024 proposed standard to 2024 standard.
I'll second that.
I have a move in a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I guess we can go ahead and move on to the transportation piece. So we'll discuss the second chapter of the comprehensive plan element, which is transportation. And we'll go over the draft plus some draft related code, which focuses on concurrency inclusions. EV infrastructure and tandem parking and parking standards. I do want to note that a lot of this transportation element draft is reliant upon the Transportation Capital Facilities Plan or the CFP. And this is still under update with the consultant that we're working with on the CFP. And so this information in the transportation element is very preliminary, hence why you see a lot of placeholders or maybe some gaps in the element itself until we get that. Updated transportation CFP from the consultant. So I just want to preface that with that information. So with that, I guess we'll go into the next slide of the transportation element. So we updated this, this discussion on existing conditions throughout the transportation element. First, we add a new section on transportation revenue sources that. Can be used to fund transportation projects in the city. This has to do with the state gas tax, TIFs or transportation impact fees, grants and so forth. Then we also updated the transportation inventory in the city. This includes pedestrian and bike facilities, transit and streets. And then we'll have a discussion at the end of this presentation, including some Planning Commission questions. And the first will be if there are additional existing transportation modes or inventory that we did not include in this list. So we'll have that discussion at the end of the meeting. And then we also updated the level of service for the LOS section and included bikes, pedestrians and motorists to approach a more multimodal aspect than just focusing on vehicles. Then go to the next slide, please, Angie. So we updated this list of the functional street classifications of La Center's roads. So if you see that center column in gray, those are the classifications of all of our roads in La Center that are above a local access road. As you see here, most of our streets are collectors. However, we have a few arterials like La Center Road or Pacific Highway. Next slide, please. So this is a look at our future conditions in La Center for our roads. We added a discussion on transportation demand and management strategies or TDM. These are items such as ride sharing, walking, public transportation, telework, any way to reduce the need of using a car or reducing the need of a car. And so these are a suite of options to consider. As part of the transportation CFP that a consultant is working on, DKS, it's a consultant. They'll be considering these TDM or transportation demand management strategies to. Include in the center. And then for future demand. We updated this section to include funding for new projects. These include projects such as the pedestrian or bike signage at Forest Street and Stone Creek Drive. Pedestrian bike signage near Holly Park in the parking lot and buffered bike lanes and sidewalks on Forest Streets. This is only a few of the projects. There's going to be more added and there's going to be more added by that updated transportation CFP. So that's soon to come, once we get that information, but just want to provide some that have been funded or to be funded in La Center. Next slide, our policies for transportation. As part of GMA, the city has to adopt multimodal transportation LOS standards, LOS is level of service. So how well a transportation system is functioning. Currently, it's generally catered towards vehicle transportation and not other forms of transportation like pedestrian or bicycle modes of transit, transportation. And then we revised policy 2.1.11 to complete the east west connection with pedestrian facilities on the Boland Street, West 19th Street crossing. 19th Street is the collector that goes, the main east west street that goes through Stevens Hillside subdivision. To the north of town and connecting that up above Highland Terrace subdivision. The roads are there, there's, or will be there. There's just no connection across the creek there. So added a policy to complete that connection. And then we revised a policy to evaluate the need of transportation demand management strategies to maintain consistency with GMA. And then lastly, added a policy to continue implementing the city's complete streets program. Complete streets are ensuring that streets serve all access or modes of transportation, so not just cars, but pedestrians and bikes and transit and so forth. And so we'll have another. Question asked tonight, if there are other policies to add or policies that we should amend. That we have drafted. And then next slide, please, Angie. So looking at code updates we made that are related to transportation per state requirements. So we have our concurrency section or concurrency requirements and concurrency essentially means. Basically ensuring that infrastructure. Basically ensuring that infrastructure to support development are being, um, updated and upgraded. Um, so essentially like when a developer comes in and wants to build so many homes, they have to ensure transportation. Is meeting, transportation needs are met and that would be include, including like offsetting with transportation impact fees or upgrading roads or so forth. Um, however, the state is requiring that we exclude some facilities. Um, and this would be excluding I five. So we just simply added that there. And then we add, updated several definitions to include. Lot of items regarding EV infrastructure or electric, electric vehicle infrastructure. So the battery charging, battery exchange stations, rapid charging station. And then we also added tandem parking and I'll go into these a little bit more in the next slides. So if you go to the next slide, please, Angie. We also updated, um, the commercial zone, the C one zone and the mixed use zone to allow EV infrastructure as permitted uses. Since that's required by state law, essentially the state law says that, um, any jurisdiction with. A interstate running through it, which I five run through, runs through the. Western side of town, the commercial zones have to have EV infrastructure. And so that applies to our C one and a mixed use zones. Um, the junction plan already allows that. So we didn't have to update there. Our last question for the planning commission is if. If we want to go above and beyond that requirement and allow EV infrastructure in other zones. So essentially in any of our residential zones in the city. So we'll have that conversation at the end. And then the last piece here is we updated the parking section of our code. Specific for residential uses, um, to allow tandem parking. In tandem parking is where two vehicles are stacked, one in front of the other with a single point of access. Also. Per state requirements, residential only developments can use gravel or grass pavers instead of asphalt or concrete for parking. Um, and then we updated the parking spart, park, parking space sizes for residential uses unless. They are ADA parking spots. And then, um. Any, uh, non-conforming parking spaces, they can be allowed up to six spots. So if they have more than six spots, they have to allow for residential development. Um, they have to conform to parking requirements, but. The first six can stay as existing, um, non-conforming per state requirement. And next slide, please, Angie. Um, just briefly going over next steps of the comp plan update. We're almost to the end here with our draft elements. So we'll incorporate planning commission comments from the first draft of the transportation element tonight. And then bring that back to a second draft next month. And then we'll also be bringing forth in April, the first draft of the public facilities and utilities element, the second draft in May. And then in June, um. This whole module, the public facilities module, parks, transportation and parks and public facilities and utilities will come to a city council draft in June. And then. Next slide, please, Angie. Um, essentially at this point, opening up to discussion, um, we'll first go back to those three, three questions I have for planning commission. And then we'll come back and have general comments and discussion and then we'll end for the night. So Angie, if you jump back up to. The slide that says existing conditions. Think that would be our first question. So the first is, um, out of the list in the transportation inventory. Did any of the planning commissioners note any additional existing transportation modes or inventory that we did not include?
No.
Mr. Joe?
I don't believe so. I think the, you know, we have our new, uh, bus stop in town. Is that the transit covers?
Yeah, we have a section in transit that covers that transit stop.
That's now operational. So that's. I'm okay.
I had a question about should we cover equestrian too?
About what?
Equestrian horse. Or do we leave that to trails?
You mean places for horse trailers and or, or places to tie up your horse?
Yeah, or to have, you know, places people can, because they ride up through the wetlands and then go up to the restaurants and tie up their horses and stuff.
We kind of talked about that a little bit. Um, I talked about it with Tracy and. About horses, sometimes there's some damage to maybe coming of the turf and then cleaning up and all of that kind of stuff. So I would know that maybe. It is something still, but. Not that.
Right.
Those are some concerns that were brought up that are valid.
Yeah, are they, are they questions or are they required? Like people pick, well, I say, picking up their dogs or, you know, picking up their messes? What about the equestrian? Do they, do they hop off their horse?
Have you seen them with the shovel in a bucket?
Yeah.
And they have poop bags too.
Or a big, a big plastic bag or something.
Or you can have separate trails for horses like through the.
Right. Anyways. They, they obviously add another dimension as.
Yeah, but I mean, horses are local to the center area.
Yeah, but I think it's one of those things that if there's an, if it turns out being an issue, we, we can always, we can always change code, you know? Modify it, but at this point I think we're fine. I don't. You're thinking, want to adding that?
Do we want to add that as a different mode of transportation to the transportation plan or not?
And if you do add that, are, are the, the opponents that have horses? Are they going to come back to us and say, okay, well now that that's part of our transportation? Are you going to provide areas for us to graze the horses, uh, places for us to tie them up? I don't, you know, I'm not sure if that opens up another. Cat, potentially a cargo, uh. Bag of worms?
Bag of worms.
And anyways, I, I think that might, you know. Particularly if you say, hey, well, the city says that's one of our transportation. They may come back and say, well, I appreciate that, but how about providing us some facilities to accommodate that? And that might be a little tough or. I don't know.
And for, and for a frame of thought, can for your conversation, maybe. Is horses or equestrian use a recreational? Aspect or is it for transportation? I think that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true. It's maybe leave it in trails.
Yeah.
Okay, good point. Thanks.
Okay.
You got us back on track. No, I think, you know, it is.
Because most of our horse usage, I would imagine is more recreational.
It is, yeah. They're not going to work on their horses.
And the other thing was, what ever happened to the golf carts? As a different mode of transportation in town? I thought there was a conversation about that.
There, there was a conversation about that. We have not brought it up again at the City Council. Do you know anything more about the golf cart, Alec? Alec?
I, this is the first time I've heard anything about golf carts, so, um, I don't.
Passed city council.
Yeah, it did, yeah, have city council. Brian?
Okay, so maybe we leave it out then?
Yeah.
I think there'd probably be a number of people who would like to see that. For our community become a golf cart community, but. That adds another dimension of. I think a sheriff department probably would say. Please, no.
Although Richfield did it for their veterans.
What's that?
Richfield has done it, has a golf cart zone for.
A zone?
Yeah.
A zone for it.
That's, that's the zone around.
Like downtown Richfield.
No, or something, probably a very specific area, not.
Right.
But I think, yeah. Our streets aren't very. Friendly. To, to.
I think we can leave it out as it already went to city council, so.
Yeah, probably. I like the idea to some degree, but I think. Unfortunately, we don't have a, our infrastructure doesn't really accommodate that very well safely.
Certainly, yeah. All right. Does anybody else have any other modes of transportation?
Nothing here.
I, I had, one of the things you talked about EV. Back to where you talked about EV.
That, that'll be another question coming.
Well, that's, oh, that's, okay. All right. No more questions on this one.
Okay, so with that, I guess we can move to, um. Policy slide, Angie. We have a question there for planning commission. I think if you go the other direction, yeah, there you go. So if all these policies that we've revised or added to, to, to the transportation element. Um, we wanted to ask the planning commission if there are other policies that we should be adding or considering? Or the current policies as drafted, if there's any amendments that you would like to include.
Mr. Joe?
I don't.
I did not have any further policies.
Mr. Smith?
Would this be the appropriate place to. Address specific intersections and, uh, maybe goals or recommendations to city council to consider. Developments or interim developments for those specific intersections?
The policies aren't. Directly. Addressing specific areas of the city. So maybe we can hold that. Till after we're done with these few questions.
And I thought so, but I looked at two point one dot eleven and. And I started to question whether this.
Yeah.
Or not. So I can hold that. I'd like to talk about it before we leave this. Uh, draft finalized this draft.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's have that at the end of this discussion when we open up to general comments. I think that makes most sense.
Thanks.
Commissioner Hill?
No, I'm good.
Okay, the only one I wanted to, um, consider was that. Be out a policy that the city would work with the fire department to ensure developments have more than one access escape. For a set number of houses to help provide improved fire safety within the city. With the point of view that if everybody tried to leave at once, what would the traffic look like? In that development as well as the surrounding area? Should we add a policy about that?
I feel that somehow that's looked at in the plotting, but I'm not sure. I think they do the best with what they've got to work with as part of the.
Yeah, because I was just looking at one of the developments that we had last year and. It's over by the school and it was like, if you looked at it. Everything leading up to it was a bunch of cul-de-sacs and then it seemed, it just seemed like there was a dead end and I can't remember is it ivy that. Uh, would have a locked gate on it. So they couldn't go out that way and it's not considered a fire exit. So the only way out is through this bunch of developments that have a bunch of cul-de-sacs. And so if everybody left at once, I think it would just be a huge traffic jam. So I wasn't sure that that was taken into consideration. And so that's why I'm suggesting that we add this policy.
Is there, is there an existing, you're talking about setting up a new policy?
Yeah.
Uh huh.
I believe the fire marshal looks for two access points during the land use review. Um, I think that if there isn't, there are conditions that they can honor either like sprinklering or something. Or they don't allow it at all. I know they look at it. They do a complete review for that. But that's something, I don't know, maybe Alec knows a little bit more about that.
Yeah, Angie, I, I echo what you say essentially that. I think even from pre-op stage for applications, the fire department's pretty involved with land use permits. Um, and they do have specific requirements for, um, once you hit this X threshold of housing units, um, you need a secondary access, even if it's emergency. Um, and like, I think Dinah, the one you're alluding to, I think even though that street's locked, I think they still have emergency access. If and when needed, if and when needed, but it doesn't address your other concern about if, if, if everyone has to evacuate. Then necessarily can't use that locked access road. However, fires are very involved in planning and like what Angie said, they can't provide that secondary access. Usually the homes have to be sprinkled.
Yeah, that's kind of blending two things almost because everybody in a neighborhood evacuating typically doesn't happen if there's a single home on fire.
Right.
So it's almost like more of an emergency.
It is.
Thing that wouldn't necessarily be part of the, maybe the fire marshal.
Look like a fire.
Concerned with getting the fire truck in and out to put out a fire.
Exactly.
And I think that they, they look to make sure that they can do that, or like Angie said, put alternative requirements.
And they kind of like, look at just the development too. They don't necessarily consider the, the area around it. And so that's what concerned me about this area is all the, you know, circles. Third Street Circle. Minnehams Court, you know, first circle, all these dead ends that everybody in that area has to go out to.
Have to go out to.
John Storm to get out. And they, you know, it just, I just have a feeling it's not a good thing.
Well, going along with what you're suggesting there potentially, could we put? With not necessarily a policy, but could we put some kind of a statement in there? Indicating that the Clark County Fire Rescue. You know, has, you know. Has a, has a, has reviewed our, our, our. Infrastructure plan or what are they? They reviewed our. What, what did you say? The, they looked at?
They reviewed the plan?
They, they, they've done a review to, for safety purposes, right? And, and come back to us apparently and said, we're, we're good. But the fact that we may be saying something. For anyone to look at this says, oh, that's been, what about, you know, kind of going to your question, you know, what do we do? Maybe a statement on the fact that the, the Clark County Fire Rescue have, has in fact reviewed our access or, or. Exiting our city safely and.
Yeah, but I think, I mean, the part of it, I think they did for that specific development, but they didn't look at the big picture and even, um. Vineyard Vista has two exits. And one of them is going through another, so there's eighty houses in that development or something like that. They have one exit that goes out to. Past Aspen, whatever it is. And then the other one is going through a development that already has over a hundred houses in it. So it's only got those two exits for those eighty houses that generate, I don't know. How many cars.
You're thinking, you're thinking that the fire, the rescue has, really didn't complete their jobs thoroughly?
I think they look at specifically the development, but they didn't look at the bigger picture.
Why would they not look at the bigger picture? Any idea?
I don't know.
I would think they would.
I've, I've got a question, if you don't mind.
Oh.
Maybe for Alec. Uh, would this be the appropriate place for what Dyna's looking for, or would this be maybe something that would be addressed in another part of the code that deals with. Requirements for outside agencies during the review process, maybe something outside of the policies of this transportation code?
Yeah, I'm trying to.
And maybe that.
I've been thinking. Yeah, go ahead, Dinah, sorry.
Maybe that doesn't have to be answered today. Maybe we can just discuss it again in our next meeting. And you can.
Or there might be a specific place to go independently, you know, with that.
Right.
To, to put in a request through a council meeting or something or a different part of the code. Sure.
Yeah, because I know we. We work with the fire department pretty closely and they do take a look at these developments and. It's, it's hard to look holistically as things are being developed. It's kind of piecemealed over time. Um, but I know as. The city has new requirements where they have to have so many connections to the other streets preventing that cul-de-sac effect where everyone's going out to one street. So like Vineyard Vista was connecting to an old subdivision that wasn't necessarily. To the standards that we have now. Um, and then I think it's Breezy Creek Trail, you're thinking to the south of the school. That's also linking to. Um, subdivision that had older standards, but then necessarily have like those complete streets and a more of a grid-like pattern to prevent like some, something like this happening. So, and the fire department was, they did have concerns at both sites for these reasons. So. Maybe it's worth having a policy just to connect transportation and fire. Department needs, even though it's already being done, but at least have a po, policy just to reinforce that, if that makes sense.
That's kind of addressed.
Yeah, yeah, that would address my thing.
And we have, we have the climate resiliency element that we've already worked through that addresses like, um, emergency evacuations and so forth. And so maybe there's just maybe some overlap. We need to make sure that happens, some cross pollinating.
All right. Anything else? Any other policies that need to be added or amended?
What I can think of.
I'm good.
All right, next question.
So the next question will be, um, if you go down to slides, Angie. And this has to do with EV infrastructure, maybe one more slide. There we go. Um. There we go. Um, so beyond um the state requirement to have EV infrastructure or electric vehicle infrastructure in commercial zones. Was the planning commission seeking to have these in any other zones or at least encourage these in other zones? Not requiring but encouraging um could go either way, but just wanted to float the idea with you all.
Commissioner Smith?
I am not seeking that. No, thank you.
Commissioner Hill?
The you're talking about the EV?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm thinking, you know. This whole idea that uh. Certain 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 states. We being one of them is pushing towards all electric vehicles. That uh. Seems to me we need to be sure we recognize that we are we doing things. Like for example, there I don't think there's there's not an EV station. And and I don't believe in place today uh within the city limits. Active. Um, I'm not even sure if the uh if the I don't think the uh card rooms even have an EV station. They might, but I don't think they do, but. I wonder if that'd be something that uh. The citizens of of our city would, you know, perhaps. Look down on because particularly if they're coming down and trying to do shopping and so on, would there be a place where they could drive their? Car down and plug it in and do shopping or go to the go to the market or go to the uh. Restaurants and so on.
But that's allowed in the commercial zone, so.
This is written to allow it in commercial and mixed use. And I think the ask is should we be putting these EV stations in places like residential uh zones and things like that as well? Do we want to seek to expand outside of commercial and mixed use areas for these things and start looking at other places to put them beyond that?
I I think my one comment that I emailed back that was I I feel like. Those residences that have EV vehicles, they have.
They charge them at their house.
Charging at the house. And if the if they're allowed at the commercial and mixed use zones and and there are some there. I think that's sufficient. I don't think there needs to be. Added to that. It's been the choice of the residential. Homeowners if they want that in their home.
I would agree with uh and. Um, to add to that, my only other question was what zones do other cities have electrical electric EV charging in which listener doesn't? Do you know of any other examples?
Um, it's really all over the place. Uh, when you look at jurisdictions, just depends, especially larger jurisdictions like Vancouver. They're pretty inclusive and most of their zoning still allow these, but once you get to smaller jurisdictions where. The zoning is less blended. Um, it's more like kind of what we're proposing right now, just allowing them a more commercial commercially oriented areas. That's generally what I've been seeing.
What about like um light industrial? Is that considered?
And light industrial, yeah, um, that's pretty common as well, just because that's a destination usually for someone's place of work and usually.
It's already allowed.
Vehicle work.
In the JP, it's already allowed where those light industrial areas are, so that's why it wasn't mentioned here, correct?
Yep, yep, that's correct.
Okay.
So um let me ask you one on that before we leave it. This says uh to allow. So. That's. It doesn't sound to me like it's there's any emphasis on the city taking any action, just future. Future development or redevelopment?
Yeah, it's not a requirement, it's just to allow the uses.
Good, but I guess I'm saying should should we have language that indicates that the city should take action? And not wait just for a developer to come in and uh either. Do something, build something, re-rezone something, whatever. But should the city take some action to at least? Take a step towards that direction of at providing EV infrastructure in those. Like in the C one zone, for example, you know?
So to to require it for new developments or to give credits if it's done or something to developers so that they'll make it happen?
Well, you know, for I'm thinking here in on Fourth Street.
Or the city would build it itself.
Why, you know, I think it'd be great if we had across from the. Fourth Street Grill and the Mexican Restaurant Zone, you know, we've got eight or ten parking spots. It'd be nice to have one, at least one of those be an EV spot. You know?
They're traditionally found on private, they own property. I think they're traditionally found on privately owned property, not to say that you couldn't have a. City providing that service, but I think uh from what I've noticed, they're typically uh they're through. Almost like a card lock facility where it's a a deal that has a contract with a landowner that has the infrastructure.
Like Fred Meyer.
And it's a there. Yeah.
They have a dozen.
Businesses or um hotels, restaurants have them. Not your interrupt, sorry.
Yeah.
But um I know there's also the state of Washington has encouragement for EV charging. That like they help fund some of the um building of that, and I think there are businesses that are interested in having them there, so maybe. Since the city is so small right now, I don't think we need to encourage the city to build EV charging. Because I think it will come with development. I could be wrong and maybe.
Well, yeah, I don't think we need to have a whole bunch of charging stations, but I think. I think it's I think it speaks well of the city that they're recognizing that that is one of the vehicles that are that we have in our in our town. And it's growing and will continue to grow to some level. And the fact that we are acknowledging the fact that um. You know, we we are providing at least an attempt to provide some some help in that area. I I I think I can take this on. I'll I'll send a a note to Tracy. Yeah, I'll send a note to Tracy and give her my two cents on asking her to take a look at. Not that, you know, again, cuz again, the cost is. Is absorbed by the by the car owner, not the city. Uh other than the other than the initial initial installation, I'm assuming. Or Tesla makers come in and say, I'll put one there and I'll 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 put it in for free.
Yeah, or there's like other charging networks and they actually build out their own sites and then have that.
Yeah.
And so the city, this would still be allowed through the city because this someone could come up to the city and say, hey, I wanna. Build a charging station on your parking lot, so will you give me a parking lot that I can use for that kind of thing? And then they probably get taxes from it or something.
Put it in that little triangle, little triangle on the west side of I five there.
Huh? Yeah.
That little triangle right on the other side.
Right, and my other question had on that, so I'm okay. Uh, the other thing was. I don't know what I don't I don't know what what grass pavers are. What are grass pavers?
They're pavers that allow grass to grow through them if I'm correct? No?
Dinah's correct, yeah, or they have like, there's the pavers and there's grass growing between the pavers.
They're saying for an extra parking spot, you don't gotta have asphalt. You could have, you can dig it out and put pavers and gravel around it or grass and park on that stuff.
Okay, so so the the grass covers means it's a regular paver with grass around it?
Yes.
Have a hole in the middle too. It allows extra.
Okay, I've just I just heard it. I'm just not familiar with that. That term.
All right.
Use, okay.
Good question.
I'm good. Now, now if someone ever asks me, I could say, all right, that's what that is. Okay, yeah, I'm good.
That's it.
Okay, and then um at this point, I just opening up to a general discussion. Beyond these three talking points.
I sent in some comments, but I can wait until again answer back here. The little cheat sheets are helpful for that.
Awesome, okay.
Some questions in two, but I can't don't think I remember what they were now.
And Paul is okay, just like Dinah to um answer him through the cheat sheet I've been providing.
Say that again, sorry.
I was just re- confirming with Paul, just like you, Dinah, um. It's okay just to respond via the cheat sheet I've been providing. To Paul's comments.
Would that be all right with you?
Yeah, that's that's fine with me.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, and I did just want to point out, I did have the question on tables two, three and four. In the PDF, they were looked like. Mm-hmm, you know, you with the two dots on top or they were squares. So I was not sure if that was meant to be a check mark. So if you PD up it again, you might want to just double check those tables and so that we get a true picture.
Service symbols in table three. I had the same question.
Yeah, it's like.
Are you with a boom la on it or X?
Yeah, and I was looking actually at. My other um iPad to see the um. Meeting notes for this meeting online at the city center site. And it looked, the table looked a little bit different. I had squares instead of the U with the mm-hmm, so you just need to check. Okay, cool. That'd be helpful for the next time, so. All right, that's I think that's it. Any other comments or questions?
No.
I would I would like to discuss one thing quickly uh on the transportation. This is the right place to talk about it. At the intersection of La Center Road and Paradise Park Road. I am aware that by twenty thirty-one, the goal is to have a roundabout there. As we look six years into the future, at one point, there was discussion of an interim uh traffic signal or some sort of device there. The reason that I bring it up or that I feel like it's an important element to uh pass on to the city council is because on a literally weekly basis, I'm witnessing. Near misses there. Uh, and myself personally trying to turn out towards. The junction from Paradise Park Road with the traffic coming up La Center Road. If I can paint that picture, if you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah.
If you're headed. If you're headed north on Paradise Park Road and you'd like to take a left to the roundabout. It's very challenging because the traffic coming up La Center Road. And this takes me back a long time, probably eight years ago, nine years ago, I went to a city council meeting and I requested that we reduce the speed limit. Uh, in approaching the junction. This was before the junction was rebuilt. It was the old way, the old layout. And uh my grandfather was T-boned there turning out by a speeding driver. And I asked if we could reduce the speed. The speed was reduced. After that, that was great, but within about a year, the development happened and the positioning of this uh Paradise Park Road shifted. And then the new interchange was built. And although the speed may be acceptable, I think it could be a little slower there. I guess that's not the discussion topic here. There's a lot of challenges there. If you look towards La Center, when you're trying to take a left, there's a big giant sign right there that's advertising. Apartments for rent and then there's overgrown grass and things and then and you can't really see the traffic coming up the hill. And when you think you're safe to go, you get out into the lane. And then you realize there's a car coming. And you have to creep out really far past the stop line to be able to see in the first place. Anyways, there's a lot going on there. It's a pretty dangerous place. Probably the most dangerous intersection of the city, I would say safely.
It says get down to thirty-five, but my guess is it's gonna be anywhere between thirty-five and forty-five.
People are going forty to fifty there. And it it's not safe, you know, and. You get to this thing, you get friends, his kids are starting to drive. I got customers coming in and out of there. It's it's I hear about it on a monthly basis. I witness it on a weekly basis. Is there anything that we can do to pass on to the city council as a recommendation for an interim solution? As part of this plan or is that just way out of scope for what we're doing here today?
A year, a couple of years ago, I actually made public comment at the city council. On on that subject. Not specifically. That intersection you're talking about, but. The approach to the roundabout. You get on the woodland, there's signage there that says, one of them says fifteen miles an hour, another one says twenty. Getting the people. Bringing that speed down as they start approaching that and we don't have any, it's 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 full on thirty-five all the way to the, you know, until you go. There's, you know, from that to get on the freeway. After going around the two roundabouts, there is no, there's no signage that says fifteen or twenty or anything. It's 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 fast, it's thirty-five plus. And I I and I mentioned, I I spoke before the council and said, you know, we, I really think you take need to take a look at that. Because of there's a safety issue. I wasn't, and again, I wasn't, yours is even adds more credence to that.
That one's pretty bad, you know, I got customers that come in and out with trucks and trailers. We got deliveries coming in, truck and trailer. It's it's a thing where there's just not uh the ability to safely turn there.
Yeah.
Is this the appropriate place, Alec, to maybe recommend some interim solution or development there or not?
Um. Yes and no. I think this could be something for. Tony, I think to consider, especially when they're updating the transportation capital facility plan right now. Um, which that gets rolled into this element. Um, I think that's where that would have most effect is working with Tony. Maybe working that into the transportation CFP or maybe it's something parallel to that. Um, so I'd reach out to Tony and maybe Angie could make that connection there because I don't think that's the first time that's been brought up. I'm sure.
Also be a ticket opened in the online ticket system to um for the line of sight issue as well as the speed.
Yeah, we we can do that and um I would be happy to bring that up with Tony and.
Well, the other thing on that regard there, I I I don't, I can't tell you where where I've seen it, but I have seen it. Sinage. That. Indicates that there's traffic approaching from the left or right in a situation. So if you were coming up. I'm gonna say just after the after the milk barn heading towards um. You know, what's the road? Paradise Park Road. Prior to that, I would say a signage, something to sign, you know. Caution, uh beware of traffic entering from the left or something, just to somehow somehow get the. People to be thinking about not just. Going, you know, screaming ahead to get to the roundabout, but but the fact that that reckoning, something that might trigger them that says, oh. I can look over there cuz they certainly could look over there and see and maybe even stop or whatever if they see someone trying to get out cuz.
Signage could help, huh? Signage could help. I I guess I wasn't aware that there was a separate transportation element that just Tony's working on. It's different than what we're working on. And I guess what my where I got off a little off track was I thought that there was already. So when I saw some of the uh the goals and the and the policies for between this time and that time. Twenty thirty-one was not my impression for a solution at that intersection. So that I guess that's what caught me off guard because I can look back. Three or four years anticipating a stoplight would have been there by now. And so I guess I was just looking for where the change in. Uh urgency or uh going strictly to a roundabout and no traffic light. I was just, I feel like something's changed there and I'm not sure how or when, but it's certainly different than what I pretty clearly remember anticipating, so.
Yeah, and I want to note that um this does, like what you noted, this comes from the transportation CFP, which is very preliminary right now and. Tony's working with a consultant, DKS, on identifying those areas like that intersection for. Intersection upgrades. Um, and hence that's what shows twenty thirty-one in our comp plan, um because it's a preliminary. Update, but they are still working that out. So this is kind of the time where maybe. Some changes could be made, but again, I'm not gonna speak on behalf of Tony.
And then those changes, will they come before us once those have been identified? What needs to change?
For the draft CFP, I think the CFP has to go in front of the planning commission and city council cuz it has to be formally adopted. Cuz it also includes um tran- transportation impact fees which are being reassessed right now.
So we can address it then, but it sounds like there's immediate need to do something. So you'll work with Commissioner Smith and get something done.
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
Thank you.
Good point.
Okay, um. Do we have any planning permission alternate comment about any other topics? Already discussed.
No, thank you.
No, Commissioner Hill?
No, thank you.
All right, um, our next meeting will be April ninth, twenty twenty-five. All right, um, our next meeting will be April ninth, twenty twenty-five, which is a Tuesday. I will not be available to attend.
April what again?
April ninth.
Ninth.
I'm pretty sure, right?
Um, are we not talking about the Title eighteen update tonight?
That was the, oh, that was in there. He included that.
He included that in his presentation.
Ah.
Did you?
Yeah, that was the last couple of slides was Title eighteen.
Yeah.
She does have a Title eighteen update with everything.
Okay.
Did you have any other questions or comments about filing?
I just noticed that in the revisions for the development code for Title eighteen that were in the, in the attachments that Angie had sent out to us. Uh, for some reason, I was under the impression that we were going to be reviewing those tonight. Maybe I, I've missed something.
Oh, um, a comment was supposed to go out, um, but I had items highlighted in yellow from the land use and housing update for draft code that we already reviewed, and I was just using the working document because we're going to be updating the whole code with the complaint adoption. So I was just showing the pieces we've already updated for land use and housing in yellow. And then anything in blue was transportation in that.
Oh, I see. Okay, because I just, my only question was where, what happened to eighteen dot one five eight, because it wasn't.
Yeah, I just deleted, I deleted sections that weren't relevant just to save space.
My confusion. Thank, that was more of a guide. Thank you.
I actually had the same thought earlier. I'm like, oh, no, that makes sense, but there's so many showing that.
Oh, sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine. That's a good question. Anything else?
No question is a bad question.
No.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. Uh, Commissioner Hill? Um, okay, so actually April eighth, thank you for the correction. Collection, correction. Commissioner Jones pointed out that April eighth is a Tuesday, not the ninth. And we were wondering who will be attending, and I, as I recall, I have something that night I cannot attend April eighth, so.
I should be here.
I should, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Smith?
I think so.
Cause you'll be leading the meeting.
Right.
You're not going to be, that's not going to be your Europe trip, is it?
No, I'm not doing a Europe trip this year.
Stephanie hopefully will be back.
I, I do know though, I will share quickly, that my grandfather, I'm very close with, I look after him. He had a stroke February first. I've been spending a lot of time with him and it's a little bit unpredictable. So I may not be the most reliable person to look forward into thirty days from now and say, I'm going to be available on that Tuesday evening. Uh, because there's been a lot of tumultuous evenings uh, over the last forty days or so. So I'm not sure how that will roll out, so.
We can roll with that, I'm sure.
I'll do my best.
And Commissioner Clark did mention that she, we can be here more likely next time, so um, does she plan about being here next time?
Okay.
Right.
And yeah, if somebody can't make it, if you could just send me an email, you know, either the morning of or the day before would be great, but I understand.
As soon as we know.
Oh, yeah, right.
I think I can make it. I'm just warning you, I've got some stuff going on.
That's a pretty high priority.
Great guy.
I would think.
Yeah. Yeah, great guy.
Commissioner Hill, you said you would be here.
Yes. Well, yeah, that's my plan.
Yeah. So we have an outline of our plan for the, okay. All right, uh, any other questions, comments? If not, then can I get a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections then? Motion carries to close the meeting at uh, six forty-seven PM.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Alec.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, guys, we did it. Another one. Thanks.
Thanks. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you for keeping us posted.
It's still a little bit late.
Yeah.
I'm loving it.